So we thought we had invited all of our city council candidates here tonight to offer a quick three to five minutes, you know, just about their campaign, what they plan to do, and then I'd like to open up to the audience that has happened to you. In fact, if you guys can join us over here, so that we can sit over there. And then, that's it. So, but I'd like to have a nice forum of frank discussion, so I appreciate that. If that said, I will just do it in alphabet order, if you don't mind. So, go ahead.
Well, thank you all for coming out here tonight, I really appreciate it. My name is Lydia Edwards, and I hope I could be your next city councillor. I live in East Boston with my husband. I'm an attorney, and I am excited about serving this community at another level. As many of you already know, I am not native to Boston, but Boston is my home, and I truly love this city. I'm an Air Force brat, my mother served this country 23 years, and taught me what it means to serve country, to serve community, and oftentimes, as she raised my sister and I by herself, she oftentimes said to put our country before our family. But I learned that it's really about the community that you create and the bridges that you build. So throughout my life, I've been able to build bridges and help to get things done across all party lines, across whatever differences we perceive ourselves and how we define ourselves. Some of the things I'm most proud about is the legislation for domestic workers. Those are nannies and house cleaners, who are the leaders of organizing in the state, we managed to get our employers to stand with them and proudly say, "We want respect and dignity for nannies and house cleaners." And to this day, we have more rights in the United States than any other nanny or house cleaner, and we have more rights than the UN convention. That was about building bridges. We managed to get a unanimous senate because we reached over and thought about the moral imperative of treating people with respect and dignity beyond the party lines. And we had a supermajority in the House for the same reason. We got it done because we were honest, we weren't professional lobbyists, most of us didn't even speak English, but we spoke with our heart, and we talked about actually how we were connected. Today, I get to serve a lot of my neighbors in the East Boston Community Soup Kitchen. Again, Coalition Building, but it came from the community's idea to help make sure that our neighbors literally can eat. We serve 100 to 125, sometimes 150 plates of food every Tuesday. And we had no budget, we just had a dream, and we just knew that ultimately, if we put the problem out there, the community would respond. And listening to the community is something that I'm very dedicated to, and what I want to do as your, as your next city councillor. We're at a pivotal moment for a lot of our community, really wondering what Boston will be. For me, and the reason why I love this city, is because it's a city of neighborhoods. It's not like New York for that very reason. And that's why it's important that we fight to preserve our neighborhoods, and to make sure that developers obey or follow zoning laws. That's why we want to make sure that the very people who helped to build our neighborhoods can actually afford to stay here. And I'm not just talking about tenants, I'm talking about homeowners, who are finding their taxes going up every single year. We need to provide relief for them. On top of making sure that we have folks who are able to stay here, and that developers are complying with our zoning laws, we want to make sure that we have excellent schools. What I'm finding when I talk to folks is that if they are getting into the local school, they're leaving Boston. An investment in our schools is an investment in our middle class and our future. People will leave if they don't get into the local excellent Level 1 school. So we want to make sure that we are not just developing more lottery spots in those schools, we're actually, actually creating better schools, more Level 1 schools. And also, key to our quality of life is transportation, the ability to move in and out of our neighborhoods. And what that means is that our city needs to plan, not just for the moment, not just for the project, but there needs to be actual coordination and communication. When you're going to take down a bridge, redo a housing project, and then also add a casino, or add a biplane, and do all these different things, it's almost like, well, you just roll it at ice and see how we're going to react to it? And these are permanent issues, and they cause immediate, immediate harms to our quality of life. So I want the city, actually, I want the neighborhood to be telling the city what we need in order for us to move better in our neighborhood. I want us to bring developers to the table and say, "If we're going to be developing and looking at our waterfront, our precious waterfront, we need to make sure that you're part of creating a solution, that you're going to help me to fund that solution, including a fairytale." We want to make sure that ultimately, we are driving the future of our neighborhoods. I love this city, and I love it because of the neighborhoods. I love looking at our skyline and knowing there's a downtown skyline with skyscrapers, and when you see and look over at the North End, it is not that high for a reason. We need to preserve that. So I'm wanting to make sure that our city is safer, cleaner, and that we have a future here, that our middle class can thrive here still. And so I'm hoping you'll vote for me on September 26th to be your next city councillor, and then again on November 7th. Thank you.
Thank you for having me. I used to serve on this board, and I appreciate all of what you guys do. I know you guys don't get paid for this, so it means you'll enable it when you're involved. My name's Stephen Baskettilly, I know I'm a resident, I don't see any folks here I don't know, but I'm a candidate for District 1 City Council, that's this neighborhood, the North End, East Boston, Charlestown. Lifelong resident of this neighborhood, born and raised right on Andrew Street, I live in the building I was raised in, and raising my two children there right now, my wife and me. My daughter's nine, goes to the Elliott School, my son Evan is a junior at Boston Latin School. I, I come here from, you know, my path here wasn't the easiest path here, I didn't take the path of least resistance. I had some personal challenges in my life, and that's kind of what drew me to public service and served for, served the city of Boston. You know, 13 years ago, this isn't what I looked like, this isn't who I was, this isn't what I did day to day. I was a, you know, an alcoholic, had a substance abuse issue, and luckily for me, I got sober in 2004. In 2006, Salamatina ran for the city council, and I helped him, and he offered me a job, and, you know, it was gracious to take it, it was part-time at the time, and then it turned into a full-time job. And I handled his constituent services, and fortunately, in 2013, unfortunately, maybe he decided not to run in 2013, then-state rep Marty Walsh decided to run for mayor, and I did what I told him I promised him I'd do, I would help him on his campaign. The mayor was someone that was a very influential person in my life during my early recovery, and I always told him I would help him, and he ran, and he won, and lucky for me, I got to go back into the building and work in the Walsh administration. My functions in the mayor's office were as the Director of Operations of Transportation Department, and also, most recently, on leave from my job as an operations specialist under John Bowers in the Office of Economic Development. So, you know, those, those experiences and those positions in City Hall have really, you know, taught me a lot about the building, about city government, about what a city councillor does, getting things done, working on local issues, whether it's painting someone's crosswalk, or planting a tree, or whether you help a small business get open. And, you know, I think that those positions in city government have given me a little bit of a leg up in terms of my experience, because I feel that on day one, I can hit the ground running, there's no learning curve for me, I can get things done, and, you know, to me, this job is a basic job, basic city services. District City Councilors deal a lot with the basic city services that affect your life every day. Again, a crosswalk, a tree being planted, a puddle being filled, just snow being plowed. We also deal with a lot of bigger issues, and, you know, one of the biggest jobs that a city councillor ever has, probably the most important thing that a Boston city councillor does, is go on the budget. But beyond that, we, you know, we speak up at the zoning board of appeals, we speak up at the licensing board, and, you know, we deal with a lot of the stuff on the ground. You know, as a parent, the issues that a mayor did, and things that are important to me, are centered around families and children. You know, I think that our public schools are the top of the pyramid, you know, I feel really strongly about having universal pre-k, I feel very strongly about fresh lunch for all our kids, I think that our lunches should be prepared in the city of Boston and served to our students in Boston daily. I think that music in the arts should be mandatory for our children, I think that at the seventh grade level, when you get to junior high school, athletics should be offered. And as a parent, I'm an advocate of parks, as a former coach, and currently, I rep high school football, I'm a big advocate of our open space, and I'm also a big advocate of partnerships, public-private partnerships, like we have down at the Columbus Park, Karen and I, they think the Friends of Columbus Park do a phenomenal job. We are very fortunate here in North End to have one of the best parks in the city of Boston because of the public-private partnership. And obviously, as someone who's been sober for 13 years, you know, it's something that is a very personal issue to me, is the recovery services, and I'm very proud to say that the city of Boston is the first city to ever study an Office of Recovery Services, and it's something I'm proud to say as a Bostonian that we have done over the last few years. And it's something that needs a little more work, it's something that needs more resources to be successful, but it's a step in the right direction, considering we are, I think, beyond an epidemic, I think we're in a complete crisis mode right now with the opioids. And, you know, locally, I serve here on the Nothing Against Drugs Board of Directors, and, you know, I deal a lot with the day-to-day issues of substance abuse, I get phone calls daily regarding detox tests and getting people placed into treatment facilities. I also serve on the board of the Gavin Foundation's community-based nonprofit that serves about 5,000 patients a year. We own multiple halfway houses, one here in the district, the Charlestown Recovery House, we also own a recovery drop-in center over in South Boston, something that I'd like to do in the neighborhood of Charlestown, you know, in the North End, but, you know, there's a lot going on in the city of Boston, there's a lot of building, there's a lot of traffic, we have parking issues, there's a lot of different ideas, you hear from a lot of different people, you know, and I'm doing a lot of listening, I'm knocking on doors, and it's very interesting to hear what issues matter to people most. I hear a lot of old traffic, it's certainly a huge issue, especially in this district, trying to get from the North End to Charlestown takes you 45 minutes, and I can walk there in 10. So, I think what we're doing is, we're developing at a rate that is not keeping pace with our planning, and I think we need to be a little more deliberate with our planning and our development, I think we need to do it in a way that is more deliberate and basically runs concurrently. But what I don't want this campaign to be is, you know, it's hard not to go on social media, it's hard not to listen to what people say, you know, sometimes, you know, you're just on Facebook, it's just the world we live in, my kids are on Facebook, and, you know, there's a lot of talk about Old Boy Network and Old Boston versus New Boston, and I think that's a really bad tone to set, because I don't want things to be divided in the city. I think we've come a long way from the city I grew up in, and I love this place today as much as I've ever loved it, I think it's the greatest neighborhood in the city, it's the greatest neighborhood in the world. Charlestown and East Boston are tied for second place as the best neighborhoods in the world, but this is my home, and it matters a lot to me, what happens here in the future of raising kids. I love this place, and I just, I just don't want that division, I don't want that, you know, that saying hung around my neck, to be honest with you, because it's really not who I am. People can paint the picture they want of me, and that's fine, people can say I'm the mayor's friend, that's fine, he is my friend, Salamatina's my friend, Michael Flaherty's my friend, Adisa Savi George is my friend, and a lot of friends, I've been there 42 years. But I just want to put it out there before we get to the questions, my relationship with Marty Walsh is a very, very simple one to explain. When I was down and out and no one wanted to help me, Marty Walsh helped me. And when I was in the depths of addiction, Marty Walsh helped me, and a lot of other people did. And, you know, if people want to question my relationships in City Hall, they can question my relationships in City Hall, I can tell you that, I am a loyal friend, I'm loyal to all my friends, I'm loyal to everyone, but that doesn't mean that I'm going to compromise who I am, or what I do, or how I represent the neighborhood based on my friendships. My father gave me my name, I will never compromise that, and I would hope that my friends in government and in the private sector wouldn't ask me to compromise my name, because it's just not who I am. And, you know, no one tells me what to do, no one tells me how to do it, the only people that tell me what to do is going to be the people that elect me, and my wife and my daughter. But, you know, saying that, you know, I would like to just say, you know, don't, don't have this, you know, I don't want people to look at it that way, there's three great candidates, two wonderful women, my opponents, intelligent, and, you know, I don't think, I don't think we can lose either way, I mean, no matter who's elected, I think we're going to be in a good position, I think the city's in a good place, and I think, you know, if you're living here now, then, you know, you love it, just like I do. And I love it, like, again, I love it today as much as I did when I was a young kid. I just walked in, and I saw the old pictures of our old small Friday League upstairs, it was like, it was nostalgic, if you want to look at the pictures behind the desk there, some pictures from the 80s, and, you know, those, obviously, those days are gone, and the neighborhood has changed, and, you know, I think it's changed for the better. I wouldn't be raising my two kids here. I think it's a great place, and it's going to continue to be a great place, and if I'm elected, I'm going to make sure it continues to be a great place. So, I'm going to stop, and I'm sure there are some questions, and thank you very much. September 26th, I would like your support, and then again on November 7th. And again, my name's Stephen Baskettilly, if you all know me, and lifelong resident in North End, candidate for District 1, thank you.
Hi, everybody. It's great to see you all again. I've spoken in this room a few times during this race, so I gotta say I'm starting to feel very comfortable here. I would also like to commit, I've been the president of a neighborhood association myself for the past six years, so I know the time and the dedication that it takes to commit yourself to this position, and the importance to your community. I'm a citizen candidate, as I mentioned, I've been president of a neighborhood association for the past six years, and I have been working on all of the issues that we talk about here in the campaign, but I have been working on them from the point of view of the citizen just like you. I have gotten those phone calls at 6:00 in the morning about fires, about trash, I have fought with the city nicely about parking, I have dealt with them in regarding, and fighting for traffic studies, for transportation, and, just like all of you, I've done it because I love where I live, I've been in East Boston for the past 15 years, but at the same time, I want it to remain a community that I am proud of, and that I know that I'm going to want to live in in the next five years, the next 10 years, the next 20 years. And I think that's what sets me apart from the other candidates. I do see this as an everyday position, having an important staff that's going to address those issues of potholes, of parking, but at the same time, we lately have seen some city councilors that have done amazing things, that have changed our city, and I think that this role has that potential. I think that we can look at where we are today, and think about where we want to be in a few years, and, and help us get there. And I also think as we have growing development, we can see, we can understand how that development is going to affect us, and we can make sure that the effects that we have are only positive. You know, I, we saw the project that was going to be a hotel on the waterfront, be turned around and not be approved, but lately, that's a rarity, an incredible amount is being approved all across the city. And I'm not against that, you know, change in growth or natural things, we should welcome them. But at the same time, I don't want to see a development that's going to cost the city more in the long run than the developer made. I don't want to see a development come in and make it impossible for people to be able to have access to the waterfront. I don't want to see a development come in and have the city have to upgrade an entire sewer system, which I have seen. I don't want to make it difficult for people to get around. Development should work with the community that it's in, it should, it should really improve it, no matter what the development is, and it's important that we keep that in mind, and that's something that we haven't seen. In my day job, I work for North Suffolk Mental Health Association, and it's a, it's a job I'm proud of. I have had a long career in nonprofits, and that's because many years ago, I promised myself I could do whatever I wanted for work, I could work anywhere, I could do anything. But at the end of the day, I had to, someone's life had to be improved because I went to work and did my job. And so that's, I've done a lot of work in nonprofits, and my spare time is spent volunteering for my community. We have a variety of different, our mission is to promote independence, and our main focus is on mental health and on substance use. So, I have seen the face of addiction, and I, Stephen, I give you a lot of credit. 13 years in recovery, that's a long time, and it's something that you should be very proud of. At the same time, I want to help people who are, who are currently substance addicted to also get help. We as a city, the only way we're going to get out of this is to advocate more funding to beds in detox and in beds in treatment. We need to implement what's known as RAC, it's a horrible acronym, it just is, but it's Rapid Access Treatment. When someone says they're ready, that they're, they want to make that change, they're, they're ready to step away from their addiction, we have to be right there in treatment. I actually personally know someone whose father had been an alcoholic for many, many years, and the day came, she was so happy, I, she cried, like, I held her hand, and she cried because her father was ready to quit. They went to the ER, 12 hours later, he walked out. They didn't want him to get dry, why should he? And, the good news is that story has to have the ending right or not tell it. A year later, he was ready again, by that time, his family had been able to line up some other options, and he was able to access treatment, and he's now celebrating two years of sobriety. But for many people, there are times when that, that opportunity will never come again, and there are people for whom that window is very short. When they're ready, we have to offer the treatment, it's the only way that they're going to get better. The other thing we need to do is we need to mandate training for doctors. Doctors go to school to be doctors, they don't go to school for pain management, but we can offer additional training, so that they don't write prescriptions for large amounts of pills, and they know that they check back in over a certain amount of time, and say, "If you're not feeling pain, let's get you down to the aspirin." And also, a big part of it is working with our youth, ensuring that they have activities after school, ensuring that they have employment during the summer. This past year, 9,000 students applied for summer jobs, and only 3,000 of them were able to get them through the city of Boston. What did those other 6,000 kids do? It's something we should, it's something we should be concerned about. And I know it's kind of interesting that I put it under the opioid crisis, but I think that it's something that ties into so many other issues. For me, I, I could go on for like a good like 20 minutes, I'm not going to do that, don't worry, I know I'm the third person up here, but there are one or two other issues I'd like to address. For me, transportation is a very big issue, and it's a very big issue because it affects everyone. I see it as an equality issue. Kids have to get to school in the morning, people have to get to work during the day, seniors need to get to services, and they also need to get to doctor's appointments. So, for me, it's, it's a very important issue. I am a huge proponent of the Boston in our harbor theory. As we do development, we're not, we're not adding more roads, and yet, we're adding more people. And the way that we're going to be able to address having all these people move around is to use some of our natural resources, and that's the waterfront. So I'd like to connect the airport, East Boston, Charlestown, the North End, and I'd also like to connect at the Red Line at South Station, and then into the Seaport. I'd like it to make sure that, so that you can walk out of your house, walk onto a boat, wind up in the Seaport, walk into your office, and not have to step into a car. We are seeing gridlock more and more in the city of Boston. When it's on the front page of the Boston Globe, I kind of assume everybody's been talking about it, but that's what we're talking about, the fact that there's no longer a rush hour, it's always deadlocked traffic. So we need to start thinking about ways to move people around that just don't involve the car, or they involve moving people and not cars. And one of the ways we can do that is a fairytale. And it provides an option that a lot of people are considering. I have spoken to a number of people who live in Charlestown, and they want to get to the Seaport, and they've got to cut by right by the North End, they've got to drive right past you. This would give them an opportunity, they just get off the road. Education is another one that I find incredibly important, I think that we're incredibly lucky here in this district that we have a large number of schools that are Level 1 and Level 2 schools. We don't have, and we're very lucky, but every school needs to be a Level 1 school. I'm asked many times, you know, my kids didn't get into a good school, and this is a huge issue for us. And there are instances, we probably all know someone in this room who's moved out of the city because their kid didn't get into a school that they wanted. These are parents that we want to have remain involved in the schools. If you're going to move, sell your house, and move somewhere else because you want your child to get the best education, that's someone I want on a PTO, that's someone we want engaged. And I think there are several ways that we can do this. I do agree with the mayor about the Build VPS program, but I do think that we should accelerate the plans so that we know what's happening, so that communities can prepare, that's number one, people might be less likely to leave if they know there's going to be a new school. And in speaking to a number of teachers, I've also heard from them, that they want to have an increase in guidance counselors. A lot of times, teachers are asked to deal with issues that have nothing to do with what's going on in the classroom. A child's hungry, a child is having issues at home, maybe they don't have a home, and it's the teacher that they turn to, that's who they trust. And the teacher's happy to help them, but the teacher is not, you know, they're not aware of the programs that are available, they're not, sometimes not aware of where to send them. Having a guidance counselor, someone who could provide that extra support, would enable them to do that. The city of Boston has a program for guidance counselors, it's currently not funded. Also, I'd like to limit the distance that students travel while getting to their public school. Currently, we have a number of kids that can travel up to an hour and 45 minutes to get to school. And science tells us that the biggest difference about whether or not a child is successful in school is whether or not their parent is actively engaged. If your child travels an hour and a half, hour and 45 minutes to get to school, how often are you going to be in that school? Not very often. It's very difficult for you to be engaged and active. So I want to cut that down so that parents can be there, parents can be visible, parents can be talking to teachers, parents can be assisting, and in that way, we'll see more success from our students, because we know that they're, they know something goes wrong, mom's going to be here, dad's going to be here, and that, and that means it's important. As I said, I could go on for another 20 minutes, I won't. I thank you all for listening to me this evening. My website is www.margaretfarmerforboston.org, I encourage you to check out all my issues, because I could go on for a long time about ways that I see that our community could be a better place. It's wonderful to live in now, and I adore it, but there's always opportunity for improvement, and I would love to do that. I'd love to have your support, and please consider voting for me on September 26th, and again on November 7th.
Okay, and that's it. If you wouldn't mind if you could sit maybe at this table, and then I'd ask that, the audience, if you have any questions, and then, you know, of course, northandwaterfront.org, yeah, northandwaterfront.com, which is a nice little area. The North End Waterfront Neighborhood Council doesn't endorse candidates, but we're sincerely grateful that you're going to come today, especially since we're two weeks away, I know you probably came from something, you're going to something else, or a bowl, so we sincerely are grateful. But the audience, we'd like to open it up for some questions for, hopefully, all candidates, but one if not, and, please, you know, we, I do just ask that, I'm going to try and take a backseat, but I just, as I said, we're all respectful of each other, I mean, they're volunteering, they're trying to come here and willing to answer questions, so I just want to be respectful of them doing so. So, we have one right here, yes?
Oh, yeah, hi, I'm Christine Clundins, I live on Charter Street in North End, and you've all talked about development, and I'm wondering, could you each just say briefly how you see the relationship between the city council and the Boston Planning and Development Agency?
Perhaps I can first start with Lydia, and then the next question, you start, Margaret.
Oh, yeah, you don't have a mic, I'm sorry.
No, we don't, sorry.
Everyone can hear.
Go ahead.
So I think the relationship is unique, and needs to be improved, I'll say that. When it comes to the VPDA, they have, there's appointed basically, and assured a certain amount of power over how things get done, where we both have planning, and we have the design and development in the same house, I think there's a certain amount of concern a lot of people have in terms of how we can actually get, or how we actually are a check on what gets planned and what gets approved. It worked in the 1960s, when it was designed that way to move as fast as possible urban railroads, but I think in 2017, we need to really reassess if that model is still sustainable for what we're dealing with. So I would like for the relationship to be somewhat improved. Having worked in the city myself, I know that one of the biggest powers that the city government, or city council has is to call a year, and to demand that folks sit before them and answer questions either from the constituents, or in general that they may have. So that's one thing that I think we should do more of, and actually, maybe have an annual report, that the city council is demanding more information and more transparency about what's being approved and what's going on. I think another way, which, I don't know if you want to call it a check, but something that I think we can also do to improve how we're working with the VPDA, is immediately, I would love, as your city, if I'm, if I'm so honored to be your city councillor, to have on my website all of the variances that are being sought, so that you're, we're as a community, you're finding out immediately what's been sought, and before it's been approved, and before you see the scaffolding in your neighborhood. And I think that's important, because I really think that we need to flip the relationship a little bit more. I would love to have the community going to the VPDA, saying, "This is the order, and this is what we love for our neighborhood, can you go find the developers and approve those projects for those things that we want?" And instead, I feel like oftentimes, we're responding to something that we don't feel that we were informed about completely, or that we didn't necessarily want, or is out of character for our neighborhood.
So currently, I believe that the relationship between the VPDA and the city council is reversed from what it should be. The VPDA is incredibly autonomous, does not have a lot of oversight even from the mayor, and I think that should change. In particular, I think that we need to push having master plans for each community. Uh, in particular, I think that we need to push having master plans for each community. Uh, as of this moment, we are completely at the mercy of what comes to us, and instead of being reactionary, I want us to be proactive. Uh, I've personally spoken with Brian Golden, the head of the VPDA, and asked if this process could be speeded up. Uh, currently, they're doing two communities a year, and at that rate, it's going to be like twenty years from now, and everything will be completely built, and the master plan will say, well, it is what it is. And that's not the purpose of a master plan. Uh, I'd actually like to see the VPDA have, uh, I'd like it to see, see it be separated, actually. So we have a planning arm that is separate from the arm that actually gives the approvals. Currently, I think there's a, I, I think it causes issues, having the two under the same roof. Uh, and I think that those need to be separated to ensure that we have an entirely separate planning process, one that is led by the community, and is what is led by the needs of the community. Uh, one area in particular that Lydia and I do agree on is transparency. And I think that the VPDA needs to improve their transparency significantly, both on a community level and on a regional level. There is no excuse for not sharing information in this day and age. Uh, we have the internet, it's as easy as typing something in and watching it appear on a screen. Uh, and that needs to be something that everybody has access to, is information about what is going on in your community. And that is something that I would embrace as a City Counselor, both in my office, I would encourage the city to do it, and also I would ensure that the VPDA did it as well. Thank you very much.
So, the question was, relationship with the City Council and the VPDA, was that what, what the question was? Uh, I think we need to stop with transparency, I think, in, in the age of technology. I think we need to do a better job communicating to people what is happening in our neighborhood, and, and that, that would, that would go for the Zoning Board of Appeals as well. I don't think we do a, I say we, I'm sorry, uh, I don't think the city does a very good job notifying the butters and letting people know what's in the pipeline. Um, so I certainly agree with Lydia and Margaret on the transparency and the things. You know, I think sometimes we, you know, we forget that when people come together in a community, and we get together, we're behind on an issue, like the nursing home, for example. We are a very powerful force, and I think we, we, I think we, I think we take for granted uh, how powerful we actually can be. Because there are at least two or three, I'm thinking off the top of my head, uh, projects in the district that over the last couple of years that have been, you know, have been, have been denied, or have been deferred, or whatever, you know, whatever, they weren't, they weren't approved. And they weren't approved because people put their collective minds together, and they spoke up. And sometimes it takes making a lot of noise, and sometimes it takes a meeting like we had in this room, we got in the nursing home, to take a stand. And we filled that room up in like thirty-six hours, and we let the folks from the nursing home know, and as well as the VPDA, that this wasn't going to be acceptable. And lo and behold, we now have a new nursing home operator on Fulton Street, no one had to move out of the facility. And I think it was, it was a great victory for the neighborhood, and I think it shows that if we all put it, if we put our minds together, and we get on the same page, which is very difficult, you're never going to get a hundred percent buy-in on, on an issue all the time. But I think what we did regarding the nursing home was, was, was one of the, in my, my term, I'm, my term, in my life in public service, it was one of those shiny moments for me. I was, I was, I had a personal stake, my grandmother was living in the nursing home, and it meant a lot that I, that I wanted to stay. Uh, and I think, I think we, we, we did a great job. I really, I, I think that we don't take ourselves, uh, I don't think we give ourselves enough credit sometimes. You know, there's a project in Charlestown, I reference all the time, on Delmon Street. Didn't happen. People on the block, people's on a small little street, on Delmon Street, people stood up and said, hey, this isn't going to happen, and it didn't happen. Same thing happened down here on Endicott Street. Folks weren't happy with the plans, and it didn't happen. I think sometimes it's not always about, you know, the VPDA is going to shove this down our throat, I, I, I don't, sometimes I don't, I don't, I don't accept that. I think that we, as a community, can do great things when we're all on board, we're all working together, and we're all on the same page. And, uh, you know, relationships between the City Council, the VPDA, City Hall is a very difficult building, it's just, it's, the way it's, the way it's, the way it operates is, it can be frustrating. You know, you have the VPDA up on the ninth floor, you have the City Council, the mayor, it's like they operate in three, three different functions. And it's, uh, you know, I have relationships, I know that I can make phone calls up to the VPDA, or I can call, uh, folks on the Zoning Board of Appeals, or over in ISD, and I can, I can, I'm pretty confident that when people in these communities aren't happy with a project, I'm pretty confident as an elected official, if I'm lucky enough to be elected, that, uh, I can, I can slow things down, and I can make things not happen. And that would be my job. It would be my job to stand up for the community. And again, uh, you know, I'm not, no one tells me what to do, how to do it, it's just, you know, sometimes you have to speak up, and sometimes you have to speak a little louder than most people, and that's what I'll do.
All right, I do want to make sure that a lot of the audience asks as many questions as we can, so I'm going to try and commit the next response to about two minutes apiece of this, and Sean, being our sergeant-at-arms, will be able to do that, so.
I just love you guys, we're, we're, we're not, we're not, we're really giving some thoughtful answers from what I can, any questions I can do as possible, in time of life.
So with that said, is there anyone else in the audience that we can, has a question for our candidates? Well, you have to ask something now, since I'm not really too far.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure, yeah.
Quick question, uh, thank you, Kansas County, I'm from, we're French Street, like, in the neighborhood. One thing that I think I heard everybody speak about in the past, but not tonight, but cleaner streets. Uh, here in the neighborhood, I'm coming out, and I see the streets seem to be a little bit dirtier, you know, on, so maybe you talk a little bit, uh, any plans for cleaner streets, or I'd like to, and Margaret, please.
Uh, I wondered if that was going to come up tonight, because the last time I was here, that was the first question I was asked, actually. Um, you know, the North End is a unique area of the city of Boston. Uh, it's a, and to me, it's a historic area. Uh, I think, I think we all know that the city reaps an incredible financial benefit from having the, having the North End here. Uh, it attracts tourists from around the world. And frankly, I think that some of that revenue needs to be invested back in the community in, in a variety of different ways. And one of the things I like to see is, I think we need to bring back the hokeys. Uh, the individual who has a broom, that has a, you know, that has the garbage pail with them. Uh, we do have the street sweepers that come through. Unfortunately, they're, you know, small areas between cars, there are areas it's just not going to be able to reach. And if we want to make sure that it's picked up, then we need to, you know, it's an old idea, but it's, if that's what works, then I think that's what we need to do. Uh, in addition, uh, September first just passed, and, you know, there's no catchy name here in the North End, you know, there's Alston Christmas, but there's no catchy name here, but there's a huge turnover in apartments in September first. And one of the things that the city needs to do is to make sure that we have planning and additional coverage here in the North End area, uh, in the days both before and after September first, to ensure that the, the larger scale of trash that's going to be coming out gets out of here. Uh, personally, I'd like to see that happen in a partnership with Greenavate, which is the, uh, kind of the environmental arm of the city of Boston.
Thirty seconds.
Thinking. Uh, so as many items as possible that are reusable, so could certainly be picked up, and then either recycled, or donated to families who might have recently expect, uh, experienced a loss of homelessness through a fire or other, for other, something else throughout, that's no fault of their own. Uh, but realistically, the city's going to get cleaner when, when we have the hokeys come through, simply because there's, there's some ways that people can't access. I know the next thing you're going to ask me is how are we going to pay for that? Uh, and one of my proposals is-
And that would be two of them.
Never mind, I have a way to pay for it, you can ask me later.
So, one thing I don't think that has done enough, that used to be done is, I don't think there is, uh, I don't think we have landlords who take pride in their property anymore, and step out and sweep their street. Uh, you know, many moons ago, that happened quite often, as you know. But I think we need to take advantage of technology. I know the day after St. Anthony's feast, they walked up Front Street with blowers, and had the pelican, or the street sweep, but in the street, and it wasn't Streets, um, the street cleaning day, it wasn't a day where we had to move our cars, or get to the curbs, where they blew the debris out from, from the curbs, and they kind of had the pelican. So they, they need to get creative. Um, we also need, I'm finding, personally, my neighbors, whoever owns my buildings, don't even know who it is. Airbnb has become a real problem with putting trash out on the street, and it's starting to really get on my nerves, I think we need to find a way to regulate that. Um, we also need to maybe find a way to start composting waste, and separating our trash a little better. Um, and we also need to start, you know, when people want to build buildings, or have to expand on buildings, they can't just put ten units in a building and not have a, a recycling room or trash room, that needs to be a requirement, you need to have a trash room and a recycling room. I think that'll help a little, alleviate the situation a little. And lastly, I still, it's beyond me why we don't have a, uh, a robust Chamber of Commerce here, or a bid, such as the one on downtown crossing, we have a thriving business district here, we have multimillionaire landlords. And I think a way to supplement what the city services are is by going into maybe some kind of bid, or some kind of Chamber of Commerce approach, where we have folks out there with hokeys, with blowers, who don't work for the city of Boston, but supplement what we do. And that would be done through the Chamber of Commerce, or through a bid.
Um, it's an excellent question, and I agree, a lot of what we're seeing in increased batches due to the fact that there is such huge turnover in our neighborhoods. Um, I do think that there's a couple ways in which we should, in which we should approach cleaning streets. One is enforcement. I'm a landlord, I'm a homeowner, and if one of my tenants puts out his trash in a non-performing trash bag, I get a fine. So I immediately go and tell my tenants what to do. So I agree, to a certain extent, with what Steve just said, it's a matter of really enforcing and bringing landlords to the table. It shouldn't be that easy for you to just allow your tenants to just completely pollute the street, and you have no responsibility and have no accountability. So I think we need to start to find and enforce our actual laws that are on the books, and make sure that people are held accountable. I think there's also a good opportunity for some good neighbor policies with our institutions. You know, look, a lot of the folks who are turning over in our neighborhoods are students. And I think a lot of what they need to be told, and a certain amount of orientation needs to prepare them, you're moving into a neighborhood, this is not the campus that you're on. You need to clean up, and our, and universities need to almost have that as a policy for their students to understand, when you move into someone's neighborhood, you need to clean up, you need to recycle, you need to take care of your own trash. Your parents don't live here. This isn't, no, this isn't your home. And then also, we need to really look at how we, as a city, are treating our streets and clean up as a culture. There, I mean, these streets weren't always this dirty, there were many times when these streets were taken care of, and there was a culture within the neighborhood to care about beyond just inside of the home, but on the outside as well.
Thirty seconds.
And I'd like to see us bring back, not just, you know, the, the Boston shine, or East to shine day once or twice a year, but on a regular basis. I think it's a wonderful opportunity for community, uh, community empowerment, and for us to feel like we're real, um, caretakers of our community, to really create almost cleanup crews that go out on a regular basis, and really make the North End a stronger community and cleaner community, as well as East Boston and Charlestown.
Yes.
Uh, we're in East Central Street, uh, I have a follow-up on clean streets, because I am lucky enough to live on one of the cleanest blocks in the North End. And there's something very unusual about my block, it is almost entirely fully occupied, and there are very, very few blocks like that in the neighborhood. We have people now investing in this neighborhood from Arizona to Indonesia. Any thoughts you have on dealing with the problems of absenteeism in this neighborhood, we'd be most appreciative.
So, that's a great question. And, you know, I miss the days when everything was unoccupied, it was, you know, the lady who owned the store on the first floor also lived in the building, and the people who worked in the store lived in the building. And, you know, things have changed, and, and we do, we have a lot of absentee landlords. Again, four hundred handling of the street, I'll say it out loud to the camera, is a joke. Airbnb, In-N-Out, all day, I have no idea who's living next door to me, there are piles of garbage bags in front of that building. We used to do something when I worked for Sal, and I'm not sure, I was looking into it the other day, and I think it still is, um, it's still, uh, something that is active, but I'm not sure how, how active it actually is, because the property task force. I know the mayor's office does something along those lines, and it was really formed to, uh, to, um, kind of, uh, identify certain properties and neighborhoods where there was a lot of drug dealing, a lot of prostitution. But, uh, in this district, when we were having issues with, um, with students, Councilor Ross at the time put this, uh, group together, and we met on a regular basis when I was working for Councilor Mattina. And we basically would send a letter to the home, uh, to Arizona, and you're right, sometimes it's a, it's a, it's a management company, and we would just put them on notice and say, hey, this is unacceptable, uh, next time ISD will come down, next time, you know, we're going to come down with an inspector, you know, so there's, there are ways to reach, um, the property owners, very difficult sometimes. I mean, there was a, a, a building across the street from my house for years that we had a hard time with, we could never find, my mother and father could never find who owned it, we could never get in touch with that person. But I think maybe a, a problem property task force, a really powerful problem property task force with, you know, other district councilors, or other councils at large, and other departments, maybe, you know, Public Works and ISD, uh, you know, and, and really dropping the hammer on enforcement, like Lydia said, we don't do a very good job enforcing anything. Don't, don't block the box, the, the yellow tickets, or green tickets, whatever they're called. I would be, uh, I'm a big fan of our problem property task force.
Um, I agree that we need to make sure that absentee landlords are held accountable. And I think it's, it's not just, um, sending them letters, and not just trying to communicate with them when they're not there, it's really just getting to the, to the point that if you enforce a certain law, well, you start to tax them, you start to punish them directly, and make sure that they are having to pay their fair share. And there's a whole process, if they don't pay those taxes, that the city can solely begin to own that property. And that's what happens. Whenever, if, if anybody else here didn't pay your taxes, by the way, the city could go into that process. So I think we really need to be very aggressive with that. I think there, the, the, I think it's the problem property owner, it's almost on a website, um, DND was doing, where they literally shamed them, and would put a picture up there, and say, who owns this? And for people to be able to post and actually put them out there, on what we would say, on Front Street, and say, you need to do something about this. I think that then we need to not only enforce, but really talk about how we're going to put it on them, to actually pay, not just a fine, but you need to improve to, to fix this mess. Um, and then also, I mean, it's a matter of safety, too, right? If you're absentee, and I could cross the street from here, it's an abandoned house, when I see someone coming out of the house, I call, please. Because I know that, that there's no one living in that house unless they're up to something, unfortunately, not very good. And so we, it's a matter of safety, too, not just of cleanliness, that we also need to look at, um, these properties, and make sure that we're holding them accountable. I think finally, I mean, on the flip side, that's dealing with the first, uh, the person and the owner already being absent.
Thirty seconds.
I'd love to see the city start to really push for more owners to be occupied, and come up with policies and make it easier for homeownership, um, looking at rent-to-own programs, and looking at ways in which we're actually creating new pathways in which folks can begin to own in the North End. Um, I'm thirty-six years old, so a lot of folks in my generation, either they're going to pay a certain amount of rent, it gets to a certain level, and they're gone. They can't afford to stay in the city. And I'd love for us to be really investing in creating more owner occupants in the city of Boston, and, uh, get into some more policies about that, and then a question.
One of the reasons that you're seeing so many landlords that are from, you know, Arizona, New York, Texas, Indonesia, is because currently, the way the city of Boston is set up, uh, purchasing property here is an amazing investment. And one of the reasons it's an amazing investment is because we're not regulating Airbnbs. Uh, a few years ago, Airbnb was mostly the person who had a spare room, or a, you know, or a couch, and it was, you know, it was spread out throughout the city, and there was a variety of price points. Uh, nowadays, and I've spoken with some specialists who are working at City Hall about this, it's a small number of people who are investing in real estate, purchasing large numbers of units, and are hiring a property management company to manage them, and are constantly of units, and are hiring a property management company to manage them and are constantly turning them over and treating them like hotels. And the fact is, if it's going to be treated like a hotel, we should regulate it and tax it like a hotel. And first of all, that would have the effect of giving notice to these faraway owners that this isn't as simple as writing a check. You are going to be held accountable. I'd like to see these units actually be inspected by the fire department because I think that if you have someone who comes in and throws a huge party, there's a high potential that something could go wrong and it's not their house, they're not worried about it. But we certainly are. But if it was set up that this was more regulated, you would see that the number of owners who were purchasing for the intention of turning it over as an Airbnb would, would fall significantly. Being able to purchase a home is incredibly important, not just to young people, but to, to anyone. This is a hot meal state market for a variety of reasons. We're seeing a lot of people who had, who had children, who were empty nesters, who are now coming back to the city and that's great for them. Currently, the city wants to build 53,000 new units of housing by 2030. And there's no goal in there for workforce housing. And that's housing that's not luxury, but is more expensive than affordable. And I would like to see more of that build because a lot of what you're seeing that's purchased up by foreign buyers is, is luxury housing because that's what plays well on the Airbnb market. And workforce housing is where people have the ability to, to purchase their own home. I'm getting done.
Thank you.
Hi. Durantian State, a residential resident on Washington Street, unoccupied. I was wondering if you are for or against 4A and liquor license and more?
I believe, I believe. I believe the character of our nature, of our neighborhood, we'd be completely threatened by having a 4A liquor license. And so therefore, I'm not agreeing. I want, I don't know what else to say. Sorry. I don't, I don't agree with it. I, I think, at the end of the day, I know a lot of folks want to see a modern city, but I don't think that that's the way to go about it. Again, we have a precious neighborhood. We have folks who've, who've put their life into this, their everything into being here, staying here. And it's not a bar town. It's not, you shouldn't be thinking, I don't think, oh, I'm going to go out and have a great time. Go wild, let's go to the North End. There are other parts of the city that are dedicated to that. And if they even want to try, even want to try, they can try a pilot program someplace else. This neighborhood is a neighborhood. It's not, I'm scared that when you do things like that, it's, it's really giving up on the neighborhood. It's really saying, okay, slowly but surely, we're going to make this part of downtown. Just part of another part of downtown that has a little bit more history than the other parts. And I, I think it's disrespectful. So I don't agree with them. I think there's other ways. If we want to increase economic activity, we can look at those as well.
I'm against. I think this is a community. And although I certainly feel for restaurants and I want them to be successful, I want them to be a part of the community here and I want them to be part of the businesses that we have here. A diverse business district is incredibly important to the health of the community. But I think that you're asking too much of residents. You're asking, I mean, we talked about trash. Could you imagine how much it would be if people were stumbling drunk out of bars and restaurants at four o'clock in the morning? It would be significantly worse. I see far more negatives than I see positives. I think that if there are areas of, you know, lambs down street that wanted to investigate that because no one lives down there, that's a whole different discussion. But people live here in the North End and that needs to be the number one priority.
I'm 12, 13 years, so I don't support any of that. Frankly, I know it's, the preparation use of marijuana has been passed statewide. And I'll do everything I can to keep that kind of stuff out of the neighborhood as well. That's a little more horrifying to me than 4A, to be honest. And I'm just, it's just my opinion. I feel that it's a gateway drug. People try to tell me otherwise. I think I'm an expert on what a gateway drug is and what isn't a gateway drug. But on the 4A, I, I've been sober a long time. I don't, I don't want to promote more drinking and, and, you know, I get worried kids getting caught late at night. And it's just more time to have to get breathing.
Could you talk about your plans for affordable housing? I don't mean low income and what you'd like workforce and middle class?
Okay. That was me. I said it really fast, so I'm stating it a little slow this time. But the, the mayor currently has a plan to build 53,000 new units of housing by 2030. It's one of the reasons that everything before the ZVA seems to get approved is because, you know, they want to hit that goal. Part of that does include affordable for affordable housing. And we've certainly seen several projects that have come forward in the district that have addressed the affordable housing issue. But there is no goal in there for workforce housing. And now, there are formal, there are formal definitions elsewhere for workforce housing. But for me, workforce housing is anything above affordable, but below having to work at Google in order to afford it. And that's where you have your first-time homebuyers. That's where you have your professionals who don't work at Google, don't work at Amazon, people who have a reasonable income, but, you know, don't have the ability to buy an $800,000 condo. In order to hit this, I see the variety of different tools that we could use. Number one is set a goal. By setting a goal, it says that this is important. It says that we understand as a community that there needs to be a variety of different housing options for everyone. I see also that, one of the things I like to see is something that we've seen in Minnesota and is partially used in Austin, is that new development could be built that will not have the ability to get resident parking stickers. This means that the people who go into this housing know that they will live a car-free lifestyle. And they're, I understand, maybe it's not for you, but there are plenty of people out there who live that, who live that lifestyle. This would have the added effect of lowering the value on the market for those particular units. And for a young professional who is looking for a first-time homebuyer experience or two, or two adults that want to purchase a home, this is an avenue to ownership that would be able to, that's accessible for them. We also have a variety of programs through the city. And I'd like to see additional funding to go to them so that we have more opportunities. We need to be able to have a variety of people who work here in the city in order to maintain a healthy workforce. And that, one of the ways we're going to have to do that is to have workforce.
Well, I fall right back category of workforce housing. High rent. I, I don't, I don't own, unfortunately. I missed the vote on that in this neighborhood. I think we need to be really strict on our regulations with Airbnb. I think they're driving up rental costs in this neighborhood through the roof. And it's very frustrating. I've referenced Airbnb a few times for a few things. One is funding, the other, safety in the, obviously, allowing Airbnb to operate the way they're operating now is, is, it's really driving the rental rate up. And, you know, I'm fortunate that I have a rental unit that I rent for my sister, or I probably wouldn't be able to afford this neighborhood. And, well, I'd find a way to afford it. But, you know, I want to see, I badly want to see more workforce housing. And maybe there's a way that, you know, like my just referencing, the mayor has a really robust housing plan, 53,000 units. You know, maybe there is something that the city can do to require that workforce to build. Maybe there's a new goal and maybe the workforce is in that, in that plan. You know, I don't want to see people, I mean, problem is, what else can we develop around, around in this neighborhood? How are we going to build middle income or workforce housing in this neighborhood? Because there's really not much more to develop. There's a few parcels that might be in play, but, you know, do we want more building in the, in the neighborhood? And, you know, I, I think the answer to that, you know, but, you know, what I'd like to see also is, you know, it's a little off track here, but there's a whole generation of people becoming seniors. And I think we need to find a place to put them as well. There are people who've been living here for 70 years or so, and I, I think they're going to want to die in this neighborhood. We don't have enough seniors out here as well.
I think the issue of housing is something I'm very deeply qualified to talk about. Having the deputy director of the office of housing stability, my entire focus is how to keep the middle class and the workers in Boston with our development boom. So I'm very proud to be already working on development without displacement. And there's several ways in which you're going to do that. Yes, we have an aggressive goal of 53,000 units. 6,500 of which is supposed to be enforced. I agree that we need to first look at that goal. We need to determine if that's the city of Boston that we want to be. And we really need to make sure that we, as a community, are defining what the city of Boston wants to be. Again, we are a city of neighborhoods, which means we have a very strong, traditionally very strong middle class, a traditionally very strong working class. And that's something to be very proud of. And so when we look at our goals of what Boston's going to be and as we're developing, we need to make sure we're still developing for the folks who are here first. So that means a couple things. First, acknowledging that market rate housing and deeply affordable or even workforce housing are, are connected. So you're going, we're going to have market housing, we're going to have affordable, we're going to have workforce housing. I think we need to talk about the definition of what each one of those things are. We need to acknowledge, right now in Boston, half the city makes $35,000 or less. So when the average rent is $2,000 and we're building on that average, we're not building for half the city to start with. So we need to talk about our measuring stick and how we're even planning. That's the big picture. Then when it comes to the day-to-day, we need to talk about actual homeowners. I agree that there's probably not a lot of places where you could put a lot more families. But we need to bring the small property owners to the table and actually offer them an incentive, which is pending now in the State House, a piece of legislation that I wrote for Angela Boncoria, Senator's, as the lead sponsor. It's a tax credit, $1,500 per unit to incentivize people to keep their rents below market so that families can rent. We need to also require universities to house their students, pull them out of our housing stock. No one compete with Forbes, each pay $1,000. We also need to make sure that Airbnb is actually, more than just regulated, we need to just limit it to what it can be, to just maybe one unit in building, period. So there's various ways in which we'll look at housing altogether and making sure that we're focused on keeping our character of our neighborhood first and then building our, our measurements and our numbers based on that.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Hi, Mike Nady, Brooklyn, Brooklyn, thanks all of you for running. I just wanted, before I get too late, I wanted to get you folks on the record regarding, you know, the big story around here was the, the arrests this summer. And it became clear that, you know, and I think I quoted the captain as saying that, you know, the police just don't go and arrest nearly 70 people without the full political backing of City Hall. And the councillor's office as well as the mayor's office and the state reps had a lot to do with that. And now, as you guys take that, the councillor's office, I'd like to get your view on what you think and how the police stayed and what you would do differently. And basically, just your comment on the general situation.
Yeah, it was pretty disturbing this summer. I don't know if anyone, I actually was physically in the feast the night of Santa Agrippina when they shut the feast down. They, they showed down at 10:30, opened until 11. And we knew a young kid, but it was, I'm assuming they were a nine-year-old daughter. And it was, it was, I was, I was pretty, pretty intimidated and I was pretty comfortable down the block. And I'm never really in a place where I feel that I'm not safe. And I did not feel safe that night. And it, it was pretty alarming. You know, I feel like this happened last summer and it's happened summers past. This summer just happened, I think it took on a life of its own because of social media and chat rooms and all that. I think we need to be prepared next summer. I think before Santa Agrippina feast starts next summer, the meeting that Senator Boncoria and Representative Mike Woods and Councillor Lamontina had with Captain Farming needs to take place prior. You know, we need to be prepared. Sometimes we lose, we lose sight of, of, you know, things we know will happen. People knew what was going to happen on that Friday afternoon, but it was a little too late. You know, I have a teenage son and, you know, it stunk because he couldn't enjoy the feast. He likes the feast. And I basically sent him out of town on the weekends with his, about friends he plays hockey with. And, you know, I think they did a great job. They arrested 70 kids, some of our kids. And I think it was, it was, it was a great message to send. But I think what we need to do next year is I think we need to have planned a place prior to the feast season. And, you know, I think we also need to hold the Boston police accountable. A lot of times, the detail for the festival does not show up. Some of those paid details are mandatory, so it's tough to fill them in. Some ops necessarily don't want to be bothered with the hassle. So we need to, we need to find a way to make sure that we get those details down the feast. And I can't help coordinate a feast. And, you know, I know it's, 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 it takes a lot of time enough and it's not fair on the folks that put the feast together.
I agree a lot with what Stephen mentioned. I think one of the biggest things I'd love to see more of in general is more community policing. I think what is really a good thing, actually, is police presence on a regular basis and constant basis. It improves actual community relationships with the police. I understand the pressure that a lot of them are under. And I think in many cases, coming only in crisis is something that oftentimes hurts the relationship. So I actually look to the relationship we helped to form with our soup kitchen in East Boston as an example. A lot of the folks who come there are folks who have not gotten into recovery, but need that, need the help. We've actually gotten Narcan training to help. And we've saved the life of this soup kitchen. And all of that to say that the police have been there the entire time. And I can't be more powerful than to seek to have the police show what service, community service is on many levels. Literally serving plates of food to a lot of folks who have, who are, who are hungry. And that kind of relationship only improved not only our trust in each other, the police and the community, but also communication. People began to talk about what's going on. People began to say things they're concerned about before they were happening. So I agree, and I'm happy that we came together and supported our officers and their ability to do something so massive. But I would hope that we don't have 70 people the rest of the next time with preparedness and constant communications before the feast. And having constant police presence throughout the feast, excuse me, throughout the feast would also be very important as well.
I think it's unfortunate that it was necessary that that had to be the response. Feasts are meant to be a great, a great time for everyone to get together, but they need to be a safe time for everyone to get together. And if families felt that they couldn't participate because of the activities of some rowdy youths, then it's unfortunate that the police had to step in. What we're really not talking about here is the fact that we don't have enough police officers. We are, we are at one of the lowest stacking levels that has happened in the last many years. And that's happening because police officers are retiring. They're baby boomers. They came home from Korea or Vietnam and they joined the police force and they've done an amazing job. And now they're retiring. And we have not been actively recruiting new officers. We've not been offering the test. We have not been training new officers. And what we need to do is we need to increase the number of officers so that when there is a detail, you're going to have people who show up. Because there were plenty of officers to choose from the detail being offered. And that's when you're going to have the opportunity to have officers in the community. That's when you're going to have officers who can enforce, don't block the box. That's when you're going to be able to solve a lot of these problems because they're going to be able to be active. At the moment, police officers have to prioritize calls. The feast became a priority. That's why we had a large show of force and police officers there that night. If they hadn't had that meeting, if they hadn't had an incident occur, it wouldn't have been a priority. They wouldn't have been there. It just doesn't give us the flexibility to be able to have the community policing, which is a vital part of maintaining a positive relationship with our police force. I have spoken to the police captain and have said to him, I'd like to see the test offer twice a year. And I'd like us to do continual recruitment because I'd like to see new police officers have the opportunity to learn from the guys who are getting ready to retire. And that would resolve a lot of the issues that we've been talking about this evening, is simply having the staffing level that we need for the size of city that we are. Thank you.
I actually have a little bit later than that clock on the wall. So I'm going to cut it off there, but I'm sure that they'll stick around afterwards. But if I can, maybe if you just want 30 seconds apiece to offer your final thoughts and then starting to flee again.
Bye.
We don't need to.
I'm okay. I'm okay.
But while you're thinking of that, I'll just mention that in observance of Columbus Day next month, our meeting will take place on the following Tuesday. So that's October 10. And we will be having marquee here. Stephen mentioned that they're going to be taking over the nursing home. This is a great opportunity to see what plans they do have in store for it as they have committed a few million dollars to its renovation and have said that they're committed to keeping it in the neighborhood and helping our elderly citizens and those that are needing long-term care and help. So with that said, well, first, please join me and thank you all.
Again, I'd like to thank you all for joining me this evening, or joining all of us this evening. You know, you're committed to your community and you're committed to your democracy, which is a truly wonderful thing. I'm glad we're not competing with the Patriots. I don't know how many of you we would have lost, but I certainly appreciate the fact you're all here. As I mentioned before, I'm a citizen candidate. I come at this from a different direction. I come at this from being in the community, working on the issues that are most important to us. I regret that I didn't mention earlier that if I was elected your city councillor, I would like to treat the North End as if you are a historic district. Now, I know that being a historic district involves a lot of other things that I'm not sure people would want to see happen. But certainly, the, the issue of the sidewalks being cement when they actually should all be brick is one I do understand and agree with a lot of you. I've heard it from many, many residents that they're not happy about that. And I think it's important that the city be willing to invest some of the funds that we earn from having the North End here back into the North End. And that would be part of it. I thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. Again, my website is margaretharmerforboston.org. And I am happy to stay and answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Stephen, Margaret went a little over a minute.
I'm not going to be a minute. I want to thank you all again for your service to the neighborhood. And again, I just know that you live in the greatest neighborhood in the world. And we're going to get in trouble again on, on that tape recording this. But I love this neighborhood, but I don't, I don't really know what to say other than I love this place. And I will do everything I can to protect, protect what we, what we have here. And I will do everything I can to protect the character of this neighborhood, the feel of this neighborhood, the community we've built here. You know, a lot has changed in the course of my lifetime. But again, I love it today more than I probably ever loved it in my life. I'm raising my kids here. My kids love it. My, my wife loves it. I have kids in a local public school. My kids play in local leagues. And, you know, I think we're getting back to being a neighborhood, like a neighborhood again, like the neighborhood I grew up in where we went down the Little League field and there were 100 kids down there every day. And this community center that has a waiting list of 200 kids for the after-school program, the fact that we're seeing 200 folks, the fact that we're seeing a waiting list of 200 kids is, is a sign of where the neighborhood's going. And I hope it continues to go in the direction of, of bringing families here and families staying. But again, September 26th, I love your vote. I love this place. Thank you.
Thank you all again for sticking it out through this entire night. I just want to say ultimately, I'm excited about being your city councillor because it means I get to serve this community. It means I get to be able to assure that folks have a voice and that our neighborhood is protected. I think what I'm most proud of is the, is the bridges that I've helped to build throughout my life. I think what I'm most proud of is the bridges that I've helped to build throughout my life. Even being endorsed by Senator Joe Boncoria as a sign of building bridges because he and I were opponents just last year, but immediately got to working on housing crisis issues. And so I'd like to continue to build those bridges. You know, our district is one of the most diverse in the city of Boston. And that's been requiring someone with a range of not only experience, but the range of approach and the ability to talk to as many people as possible. I think it's great to have deep roots, and I intend to have them here. I'm not leaving. This is my home, and I love the city. But I want to make sure that everyone here feels that they can access me and that we have a government that is responsive to that. More importantly, I want to make sure, above all else, that our neighborhoods feel that as we're growing, that they are at the seat of the table and they're defining our future. We don't want to be defined for us by developers or by people or by administration that may not be listening to us. This is our home, and we need to make sure that we are responsive and we are defining what it will be. So I hope on September 26th, you'll vote for a candidate who'd fight for our home. And again, vote for me, Lydia, who lives on November 7th. Thank you very much.